Okay, we're gonna call this to order. Vice Mayor.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father Lord, we just thank you once again for this opportunity to be in these chambers tonight. God, I thank you that, Lord, you're the same yesterday, today, and forever. And that, Lord, it was your love for us that gives us the ability to love you back and then also to love one another. Lord, I thank you for Riverbank. I thank you for this council, the city staff. And I just pray that tonight, as we go through the presentations, recognizing those presentations, that, Father, they would be honored and encouraged tonight. I pray, Father, that as we do business, there would be wisdom in the room and that you would just help each one of us do our part in making Riverbank the best city to live in. In Jesus' name, amen.
Para traducción en español pueden escanear el código localizado en la última página de la agenda. Can I get real quick please?
Councilmember Uribe?
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Here.
Councilmember Call?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Here.
Mayor Hernandez?
Here.
And scheduled agenda changes? Oh, that's right. We will not have closed session. It will be moved to a future meeting. Any conflict of interest, any council authority members, staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we are going to move forward to presentations. And we are, we have each council member that nominated someone for Older Americans Month. And I would love to start with Councilmember Uribe.
Thanks.
Alrighty. So, how's everybody doing? Alrighty. So, I had the pleasure of nominating Francis Guevara. And so I want to kind of do a little introduction of Francis here. So Francis has been a proud Riverbank resident since 2003. But his journey started in Chicago, Illinois. His parents immigrated from the Philippines in search of opportunity. And soon, the family found themselves in the Bay Area where Francis honed his culinary skills and embarked on a career in the food service industry. While working as a chef in the Bay Area, Francis met his wife, who's in the back row here. Proof that great food really does bring people together. And so this September 1st, they're going to be celebrating 40 years of marriage. Which is practically a lifetime in restaurant years, right? Something like that. So seeking a family-friendly community, they moved to the Central Valley where their two children grew up in Riverbank and are now pursuing careers in the medical field. Francis, and I'm quoting Francis here, "Riverbank was the perfect choice, offering great schools, affordability, and a strong sense of community. Not to mention its prime location for quick escapes to the coast or sierras." The town's agricultural charm gives it a country feel, but with all the conveniences of nearby metropolitan areas. Francis had been serving up smiles at Red Robin and Riverbank for over six years after stints in Turlock and a variety of restaurants ranging from fine dining, coffee shops, Greek, Italian, and barbecue. So if it can be cooked, Francis has probably mastered it over here. So beyond the kitchen, Francis is deeply involved in the community. As the assist market partner for Red Robin, he has supported numerous local organizations, including Riverbank Chamber of Commerce, Boys and Girls Club, Seroptimist, Casa de Rio, and more. And you guys probably noticed I brought four pages up here. I'm not going to go through four pages. Three of them is actually just the partnerships that Francis has been working as, has kind of cultivated over a year and a half. Everything from softball associations, our school districts, Modesto School Districts, Salida, Oakdale, you name it. He has just, he has really been going above and beyond. He believes in making a positive impact, one burger, one fundraiser, and one act of kindness at a time. And I remember meeting Francis almost a year ago to this day at the Latino Chamber. And we're going to be there again this weekend. And Francis, he just, if you know him, he involves himself as if he were a part of your organization. When you come to his fundraisers, he puts on the shirts, he slaps on the hearts, and he gets out there and he pushes for you as if he were a member of that organization. So kudos to you on that. And that's kind of what separates you from some of the other ones that we've seen in town. In his spare time, Francis is a diehard sports fan. He's always cheering for the San Francisco Giants, Modesto Nuts, the Warriors, the 49ers. He also loves road trips, having traveled over 30 states. So if you need a good travel itinerary, this is your guy. So congratulations. It's been, it's an honor to recognize you and appreciate that. And so, real quickly, I'm going to just read a certificate of recognition. And this is on behalf of the entire City Council. On behalf of the City of Riverbank, Riverbank City Council, I extend our heartfelt congratulations to you for being recognized as one of Riverbank's outstanding senior citizens. Your unwavering dedication, leadership, and volunteer service have significantly enriched our community. We deeply appreciate your commitment and positive impact you've made. Appreciate it.
Hey, just first and foremost, I'm truly honored to have received this nomination. And in the company of the people that I'll be in, I was hoping that I have maybe a few more years to be able to match some of those accomplishments that they have. So, thank you very much.
And next up, we have Vice Mayor's nomination.
My nomination was Rich Homer, and unfortunately, he is not feeling well tonight. But we will honor him at another meeting so he can get his picture taken. But Rich was the city manager for 16 years at the City of Riverbank between 1995 and 2011. He established during that time the sister cities. He started the Crossroads Shopping Center. He was responsible for bringing Galaxy Theaters, and he currently works with them as a consultant. He brought murals to downtown and crossroads area, and he did the revitalization project downtown. He also is a board member at the Historical Society with me, and we appreciate all the knowledge and information he brings to us. Congratulations, Rich.
Councilmember Pimentel.
Good evening, everyone. I nominated Amparo Cordova. I have the profound honor of presenting this award to Ms. Amparo Cordova. Amparo moved to Riverbank in 1963. She graduated from the Oakdale High School in 1964. She began to work in the Riverbank Canary. She married Elias Cordova Sr. And together, they opened their hearts and their homes to numerous friends and families. Amparo selflessly volunteered her time to assist the elderly of the community, offering them rides to the doctor's appointments, grocery shopping, and anything else they might need. In the late 1980s, she and her husband Elias Cordova Sr. embarked on a remarkable ministry for the Spanish-speaking community of Riverbank, which then grew into a bilingual service over time. In the early 2000s, they initiated missions in Cuba, raising funds for food and clothing. Amparo made multiple trips to Mexico, taking clothing for those in need. And she returned home with her suitcase empty. This symbolized her generosity. In 2010, Amparo's love for the people of Riverbank compelled her to find innovative ways to help. She became an integral part of the blanket drive for the homeless of the Stanislaw River, embracing the motto, "Give them your best." Over the years, Amparo coordinated many numerous community Thanksgiving dinners, ensuring every child had a meal. If any food remained, she would encourage the group to take it to the river and find someone in need. In 2021, Amparo was instrumental in the Candy Rain Initiative, which was urging families to donate bags of candies for the children at the Harvest Festival in Riverbank. She partnered with her husband Elias Cordova over the years, dedicating their life in the ministry of the Apostolic Assembly. And more recently, she partnered with her son Pastor Elias Cordova Jr. of Community Praise Tabernacle in hopes of finding a place for the Riverbank veterans to congregate. Thank you, Amparo Cordova, for your tireless services and wavering dedication to the community. God bless you. I have a certificate here for you. On behalf of the Riverbank City Council, I extend heartfelt congratulations to you for being recognized as one of Riverbank's outstanding senior citizens. Your unwavering dedication, leadership, and volunteer service have significantly enriched our community. We deeply appreciate your commitment, positive impact that you made, and it's signed by the mayor and the council. Would you like to say a few words or no? Thank you, everyone. Adios, David, diga.
And we have Councilmember Call.
For Older Americans Month, I chose the previous mayor, Richard O'Brien. So he could not be here tonight. But as we celebrate Older Americans Month, I am proud to recognize Richard O'Brien, a distinguished veteran, former mayor of Riverbank, and dedicated community member whose lifetime of service continues to leave a lasting impact. Richard O'Brien served Riverbank with distinction, first as city council member in 2010 and then as mayor beginning in 2012. His tenure was marked by a strong commitment to fiscal responsibility, economic growth, and community development. Under his leadership, the city strengthened its financial footing, reduced debt, and welcomed new developments such as Crossroads West Shopping Center, bringing jobs and revitalization to the region. His dedication to service extended well beyond City Hall. A 32-year veteran of the U.S. Navy, Richard brought the values of discipline, integrity, and public duty to everything he did. He championed initiatives to coordinate nonprofit services, support vulnerable populations, and ensure Riverbank was a city that took care of its own. Personally, I want to thank Richard for the time, guidance, and encouragement he offered during my own campaign and decision to run for office. His mentorship and thoughtful advice were not only invaluable to me, they were a reflection of his leadership, rooted in service, and committed to helping others succeed. Richard O'Brien's legacy is one of impact, inspiration, and true leadership. His contributions will continue to shape our community for years to come.
So I have the honor of presenting this certificate to Linda Legazza. And I feel like it's almost like a duel because I never see you and David without each other. But everything that you've done over the years that I've known you, we've connected in organizations and groups that have united us over our values, our values of serving the underserved, of advocating for people with our voices, of showing up and putting into action, you know, those values. And so I would love to present this certificate of recognition to you, and I'll also read it. On behalf of the Riverbank City Council, I extend our heartfelt congratulations to you for being recognized as one of Riverbank's outstanding senior citizens. Your unwavering dedication, leadership, and volunteer service have significantly enriched our community. We deeply appreciate you and your commitment and the positive impact that you've made. So on behalf of myself, the city council, and the city as a whole, thank you so much.
Thank you to everyone on the council and the audience out here. And it is an honor to be included among the other people who were presented with this. Thank you very much.
What a cheerleader.
Great. I am going to hang out down here because we have some more exciting certificates. First is Mental Health Awareness Month. And I would love to invite the Golden Valley Health Centers crew up here. You guys always show up strong. So I'm going to begin to read this. So whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, addressing mental health needs in Riverbank of children, youth, adults, seniors, and families, it's fundamental to having a healthy community. Whereas all people experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and the prevalence of mental health conditions in our nation is important for all members of the community to know that specific tools exist which can be used to better handle challenges and protect one's health. Whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. With early and effective treatment, individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize the importance of improving the mental health of all of our residents. And Riverbank is committed to raising awareness about mental health, promoting effective community partnerships and collaborations to serve mental health needs of our community. Whereas Golden Valley Health Centers has been providing integrated behavioral health services for more than 15 years. Integrated Behavioral Health Services has been provided at the Riverbank Clinic since 2014. Now therefore, I, Rachel Hernandez, mayor of the City of Riverbank, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Riverbank, in Riverbank, as Mental Health Awareness Month and encourage all citizens, business, organizations, and agencies to work collaboratively to reduce the stigma of mental health and to reduce the mental health of, or increase the mental health of our community. Thank you so much. And Golden Valley Health Centers, as you all know, has a special place in my heart, is one of the organizations I worked with a few years back. So I'm even more welcoming to you all. And if, we'd love for you to share something about your service.
Good evening, buenas tardes. I'm Jorge Fernandez, Director of Behavioral Health with Golden Valley Health Centers. And as Rachel said, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. That we want the community to not be afraid. There's no shame. There's no, it shouldn't be any shame, right? When we have a diagnosis of diabetes, or we broke our feet, or foot, or we have a toothache, we don't hesitate to go to the doctor. If you feel depressed, if you feel anxious, you can't get out of bed because you're so down. It should be the same thing, right? Mental, physical health illness hurt, but mental health illness also hurts. I have a close family member who died from suicide. So in last week, and I'm a board member of another organization, three youths took their own life. So just like when we get a diagnosis of cancer or diabetes, the sooner we can get the treatment, the better the outcome. So I want to encourage you that if you or a family member is struggling with any mental health condition, even substance use disorders, don't hesitate and reach out for help. The sooner you get the help, the better. Golden Valley is committed to expand our services. And our chief of CEO just tasked me with doubling my behavioral health team. So that's, if we know the need that we have. So we're going to double from 15 to 30 behavioral health conditions across three counties to better serve our communities. And we can serve our patients via phone, via video, or in person to make it even more accessible. So please reach out for your, for our services, and we're here to support you. Thank you. So please reach out for your, for our services, and we're here to support you. Thank you.
I would love to invite Christina Tran Machuca up here, please. May is also Asian American Heritage Month, and do you have any comments here? We typically, or sometimes we add the NHPI to it, which also includes Native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders. But Christy, I'm going to read this for you first, and then we can get into it. So whereas the month of May was chosen as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese citizen to the United States on May 7th, 1843, but also the anniversary, May 1869 completion of the first transcontinental railroad, built with the backbreaking labor of nearly twenty thousand Chinese immigrants. Whereas Asian American island, Pacific Islanders have distinguished themselves as leading researchers in science, medicine, technology, innovative farmers and ranchers, which is huge here in Central Valley, distinguished lawyers, judges, government leaders, and arts, literature, and sports, and peacetime healthcare heroes. Whereas today, more than twenty million Asian Pacific Islanders live in the United States and through their actions make America a more vibrant, prosperous, and secure nation. Whereas the City of Riverbank is committed to a welcoming, inclusive place where all residents and visitors are safe to live, work, and play. And whereas the contributions of AA NHPI community are immeasurable, the city acknowledges the impacts of the model minority myth that perpetuates inequities in the AA NHPI community. The city continues to support AA NHPI residents in all aspects of work, life, and community. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the city council, the City of Riverbank, does hereby unanimously proclaim May 2025 to be Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and encourages everyone to commemorate this important occasion. And I want to thank you so much for accepting this certificate on behalf of the city. Your story you sent over is in the reports for the agenda for everyone to read, but really is reflective of a lot of the stories and even my own of immigrants and of the API community. So I want to thank you so much, and if you would like to share a little bit, I would love that.
Hi, everyone. My name is Christina Tran Machuca. I'm an Asian Vietnamese-American who came here to the U.S. when I was three. I lived in Riverbank for thirteen years, so it's amazing to see how much the Asian community has grown. We are kind of underrepresented in the Asian community, so it's beautiful to see how everyone is more welcoming to us and being more open to the Asian community. So it's an honor to accept this award, and thank you so much for Mayor Rachel for nominating me and the City of Riverbank for this, this award. Thank you so much.
So now, we'd love our Public Works team to join us up here. So we're doing our, our best to communicate the importance of every single department of the city, and you guys really are the backbone to all the work that happens and to keep our, our city going. So I'm going to read this proclamation for you all. Whereas Public Works Professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, quality of life, and well-being of the people of Riverbank. Whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works Professionals, who are managers and employees at all levels of government, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water, wastewater, treatment systems, and other structures and facilities essential for its citizens. No pressure. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Riverbank to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs. Whereas the year 2025 marks the sixty-fifth Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the city council of the City of Riverbank does hereby designate the week of May 18th through 24th as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works Professionals, managers, employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. Thank you so much for all you do.
I would never. Just want to thank mayor, city council, and staff for the recognition. The guys and, and girls in the office and in the field do a fantastic job, and the city really wouldn't run the way it does without them. Unfortunately, we get called when things go wrong, so it's nice that they get some positive recognition out here tonight. So thank you very much.
Don't, don't run away. We're going to take a photo, yes. Item seven point five, North County Corridor, phase one. Brad?
Well, good evening, and thank you, mayor and vice mayor for inviting me tonight. My name is, my name is Brad Reel. I'm with a company called NV5, and we've been hired to manage the North County Corridor construction. And so I've been invited here to share a little bit about what to expect for the first several months of the construction. We are available to come and present to you throughout the project to give you updates and, I don't know, learn a little together, I guess. So for those of you, and I don't know if I'm speaking to you or-
Yeah, you can address us.
Everybody outside, but this is the North County Corridor. For those of you who don't know, it's, it's about a three-mile new section of freeway we'll be constructing south of Clarabelle Road. So this picture's a little bit hard to see, but the line down the center is Clarabelle Road. And then do we have a, I guess you guys have that? So on the left side, we have Oakdale Road. Down the center is Rose, is Roselle. There you go. So here is Roselle Avenue, and we'll be building a new interchange here with a couple of bridges and on and off ramps and new signalization. And as we move over to Claus Road, we'll be doing quite a bit of improvements there as well. So this full length is about three miles. And in order to construct it, we will also be re-alining Clarabelle Road to the north here. So that's a little bit what it looks like from an engineering standpoint. For those of you whose eyes are getting worse, like mine, this might be a little easier to see. But you see the interchange in the middle, the little bow tie, and, and this will be a elevated freeway on about forty feet of fill. It'll cross over Roselle Avenue and the MID Canal and also the BNSF tracks. So we'll be eliminating the existing at-grade crossing, which will be a great benefit for time getting across town as well as safety. So that'll be a great benefit as well. So I wanted to really give you an idea of what to expect at the beginning of the project. It will be about a three-year construction process. So we're starting here at stage one in the middle of 2025. We should expect to see the contractor's equipment arriving around first of June. And then though, we have five stages of construction, and we'll finish down here at the big star sometime in spring or summer of 2028. So it'll be a big, long project. It's about a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of construction. So, but it'll be pretty exciting out here. So I wanted to share a little bit with the community about what the first six or so months are going to look like. And again, we'll share more as, as the project moves along. At the beginning, most of the construction will be happening on what we call the infield or the alignment of the, the new freeway per se. So it'll be about a quarter of a mile south of, of Clarabelle Road. And you've probably seen where we've cleared out a lot of the orchards. That's in preparation for this new alignment of the freeway. However, so a lot of that, a lot of the work will be occurring there. So you'll, you'll see that, you'll see some of these embankments grow, we'll be building bridges and all kinds of stuff. But what you'll see that will impact you the most will be some of the work that we're doing on the local roads. And that'll include Oakdale and Claus Road. So in the first stages of work, we'll be widening them. So we'll be setting K-rail, like you see in this picture, the temporary concrete barriers. And that'll allow the public to travel safely while we're working behind it and doing the roadway widenings. Most of those widenings will happen in two phases. Like for example, on Oakdale Road, we'll set up K-rail on the west side of the road, and we'll widen kind of towards the orchards on the west side while we maintain the number of lanes that you currently have on the right side of the road or on the east side. When that's done, then we'll flip flop traffic. You'll be driving on the new constructed road, and we'll be widening the other side. So by doing so, we'll be able to keep all of the lanes of traffic that we currently have, all of the turnpockets that we currently have, all the signals will operate in the same way. But by the time we're done, you'll have quite a bit more lanes on all three of the north-south roads through the project.
Brad?
Yes?
Can I interrupt you just a moment? Can you explain for everybody here, just to be clear, how much of Oakdale Road will that be impacting? Because I don't believe it goes all the way to Sylvan, right?
No, it does not. It, it goes, if I go back a couple of slides. I don't know, does this picture make sense to people? Do we know what we're looking at? So here is the intersection of Oakdale and Clarabelle. So most of the widening, we're doing a little bit of improvements in the intersection, but most of the widening will come down, and before you get to Sylvan, it'll taper out. Most of this widening is to accommodate turnpockets and additional lanes to enter into the North County Corridor, which will be a four-lane divided freeway. So we need that additional width of Oakdale to accommodate that. When it comes down and lands here on Claus Road, we're also going to be widening Claus to a couple of lanes in each direction, and really widening out this intersection to accommodate that additional traffic. So does that help? Okay.
Brad? Sorry to interrupt, but we do have printed presentations in the back if anybody would like one, or take the information home tonight.
I'll show you these in a, in a moment. Thank you. One of the other main, I'll say unfortunate features in the first stage of work is going to be the closure of Roselle Avenue. That is going to be required in order to build these forty-foot-high embankments, in order to build the bridges, the new, there's two new bridges across Roselle Avenue, and Roselle will be completely essentially obliterated and reconstructed in order to accommodate this new interchange. And that will be a one-year closure. The start of it is to be determined based upon the contractors, based upon a few issues, some utility relocations, and the contractor's schedule to complete that work. But he has a one-year window. So that'll be one of the major impacts during construction that you'll see.
Could you, sorry, can I keep interrupting you? Could you clarify what those closures would look like with a little more detail? Because it's not a complete closure, right?
Roselle will be completely closed.
Okay.
From the Covenant Grove Church down to Sylvan, and will be, you'll have access to the church, you'll have access to the properties there, but not through, you, you see, this picture's a little small, but that's kind of the, the zone between Sylvan and, and Clarabelle that'll be closed. Again, this is necessary. We're going to have major earthwork equipment, scrapers and, and running across Sylvan about every ten to fifteen seconds. Traffic's, construction traffic's going across. So it was, the decision was made that it needed to be closed for public safety.
I have a couple of questions. So my first question would be, if Roselle is going to be closed once Claus and Oakdale finish the widening piece, are you guys going to wait until those two are widened before you close Roselle, or?
It'll be concurrent, but there won't be closures on Oakdale. There won't be closures on Claus.
And then is there a way, I guess, I mean?
Let me, let me, I'll give you a little, a little more information on that. We're actually making improvements during construction, making sure that we have some improvements in turnpockets and capacity for the Oakdale and Claus intersections to accommodate more traffic while Roselle is closed. Does that make sense? So we're actually enhancing before we close.
Yes, that's kind of my question. Is there going to be completed enhancements prior to closing Roselle?
Only the completed enhancements, but there'll be interim enhancements that will be completed prior to closing Roselle.
And there, in your surveying, there was no possible way to do Clarabelle to Plainview, and then later go back and do Plainview to Sylvan? That's just a big stretch for a lot of families for a year closure. So I'm just, the survey process, I'm just kind of curious why we couldn't kind of break that apart.
This was, this was a decision prior to me arriving by the county and the designers and, and, you know, working with the people they were working with to, and again, I know we recognize this is going to be a, a big issue. And that's why I'm talking to you today and taking this, whatever slings and arrows you have. But, you know, we'll, our intent is to give as much notice as possible before this happens, and making sure that we have, again, those interim improvements done at the other intersections to accommodate the additional traffic.
Brad? I think also it'd be helpful for Stacy and everybody to understand that you are removing, excuse me, the dirt to build this up from the surrounding areas where you see all the trees. So closing at Playview would not be possible because that's actually where they're taking the dirt from, which is why they have to close it, because there'll be trucks going back and forth. Because we talked to them about this. And it's a big deal to be taking that dirt and making storm drain and runoff improvements to that road by using that dirt to build it up, which is why it's important that they close the roads because of the truck. Sorry.
One of the, one of the things the county decided was to purchase property adjacent to the project. I think it was an additional sixty-two acres in order to what we call harvest local earth material to build the project. So it's cheaper, we're not hauling- Um, we're not hauling dump trucks. On the local roads and tearing them up and creating all those traffic problems. Um, to give you a sense of scope, and we mentioned this in the other meeting. There's going to be over two million cubic yards of. Real of embankment material to build this project. And um to give kind of some reference to that. Little example I gave was um football field. If you took a football field and piled one thousand three hundred feet of dirt on top of a football field. That's the amount of material that we have to bring into this job to to build it. So that's. You know, a what a hundred and something story building. So it gives you a little sense of scale of of the amount of work that's gonna be happening. And so the decision was made, one is trying to save as much money as possible. Instead of hauling it from an outside source and tearing up the roads and have to reconstruct that and and the impacts that would do. That they purchase the land locally adjacent to the project so we can build, build the job. And that also entails, you know. For efficiency and safety, closing the road. Um, that the basin that we'll be constructing in those sixty two acres will also be. A place that uh all the drainage and runoff from the project will will uh come to. So that'll um, you know, prevent flooding and recharge groundwater and it's kind of a sustainable way to do business. Does that make sense? Okay, um. So. The Rozell detours, um if you're running northbound, a lot of this is probably self explanatory if you're local. But running northbound, when you come to the closure, you turn left or right on Sylvan. And then run northbound on Oakdale or Claus, whichever is more efficient for you and make your way north. And similarly, if you're driving southbound. Turn on Clarabelle, right or left, take Claus or Oakdale South and if you're heading down to Modesto. That makes sense. So we'll have again additional information um prior to this happening. We'll have detour signs out and and all kinds of things to help um. Facilitate people through the process. This is the information sheet. So uh. Where to get information? We do have a project website that's up. It's the North County Corridor Phase One dot com. Um, we have these cards in the back and please take some, take more than one and. Give them to your neighbors if you'd like. Uh, this website will be updated. It's got a lot of information on. The project itself right now, but as we go into construction. The theme will shift a little more to show construction pictures, to show the schedule, to show the progress. And also update with any traffic switches and those kinds of things that um. Uh, you'll need to know. We also have a hotline number that's on this card as well as on the on the boards. That number is a twenty four hour hotline that you can call and uh speak to somebody or leave a message. Everything that comes through that hotline will will get to me so that we can um. Get the information and provide appropriate responses or uh any kind of corrections or, you know. Working with the community so that we're as good a steward stewards as we can throughout the construction process. We're also going going to be working in front of individual properties and residences and businesses. When we're doing that, we will be giving individual notifications. Uh, to those directly affected. So there'll be essentially letters written written to you, letting you know what's happening. How long it's gonna be happening. So you have expectations. And uh also ways to contact us if we need to, you know, you have specific needs. Um, sometimes, you know, people are working at night and they need uh, you know, a different kind of access. We can try and accommodate those kinds of things. Um, we'll also have local signage, changeable message boards that we'll put out. A week or so in advance before we make any of these traffic switches to uh just hopefully. Not bombard you, but uh it will maybe be a little bit bombarding, but um try to keep you uh as up to date and um. As we can. We'll also be working with our public outreach team for press releases and on TV, local newspapers, radio. To help get the word out when we're doing, you know, traffic switches and and major changes. Yes, it will be. So we are available for future meetings and I appreciate the opportunity to come tonight and um. But uh, yeah, we're here and we're gonna be here for about for three years. So um we want to make sure, again, we're we're good stewards and partners in this process. So we're available to meet with you. We're uh, we've already had one community outreach reach meeting about two weeks ago. We held it at the uh Covenant Grove Church. And that seems to be a nice place right in the middle of the project and uh to uh meet with the community. So we'll be having those as well and we'll try and schedule them prior to. You know, major milestones and again, major traffic switches at some point halfway in the project. We're gonna be opening a portion of the corridor itself to traffic before the job's done. So we want to make sure we get the word out for that, for example. At some point, we're gonna, after that, we're going to be shifting traffic to a new alignment of Clarabelle Road. So for those major events, we want to make sure um we're getting the word out and we're meeting with you as as many ways as we can. So. I think that's it.
Thank you so much for coming and presenting this. So we look forward to you coming and at milestones so that we can have more information. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Brad, just real quick, um timeline on the, I'm assuming there's gonna be a a terminal avenue avenue closure. Uh, with the two over crossings going over it, do you guys kind of have a timeline for that?
I don't have it right now. We're working with the con, we're working with the contractor on his final schedule. It's a three year schedule with about a thousand different activities and trying to. Fit in all the logic of it together, but we're, once we have that, we can let you know. But that that will be, have to be closed in order to build the railroad bridges. And uh so that'll be another.
Another road closure.
Other road closure that uh, you know, we'll have to use Claus or some other ways to get north and south.
Okay. And then just for my curiosity, has phase two, have you guys locked into funding for phase two already?
They are working on that. I don't think it's. It's a few years out there.
Okay.
For sure.
Thank you, Brad. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
So the mailers.
Before you get up.
Oh, sorry, the mailers that you sent out, those ones. Um, so I know you guys are doing a really good job of sending them out to people impacted. But if I'm being honest, I think over eighty percent of Riverbank is impacted by the road closure on uh Rozell. So I don't know what the parameters are for sending out the mailers, but I know some of us didn't get the mailers. So my only ask would be to get the mailers to more people in Riverbank because that is a main throwaway for all of the schools. Um, so just getting more people uh the message because a lot of people didn't know about the event you guys had two weeks ago.
On that note, um, we've been having this conversation for for years about this coming project. And this is, as Councilman Witty, I was alluding to, this is phase one in Riverbank of four. Um, that are coming for North County Corridor. Um, you have hired a P R uh firm, right, to help you with some of the communications? And uh we spoke at that meeting about you all coming to community based organizations to present. Um, we talked about uh the city being a good partner too. And posting on our own website, on our own social medias, having you come, like you said, periodically for city council meetings. Um, so so the plan is to be good partners throughout all of this to communicate. And so we really appreciate you being available and flexible.
And and um. I do live out of town, so when the project does start, I'll be, you know, here.
Moving in.
End of the night and spending money in the Riverbank, but uh. And then I'll be, it'll be a little easier for me to uh, you know. Come more often and and uh visit with you.
Thank you. And and like you said, just it's up to us to also speak to our neighbors about all of this because it's gonna definitely impact all of us. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
All right, seven point six uh Cheese and Wine Festival update.
Michael Patton, our Director of Parks and Recreation, will provide this report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let's wait for Norman to get our presentation up. So, excuse me. Uh, Parks Recreation, we um after what we claim is as the successful twenty twenty four for Cheese and Wine. Um, we're took the reins again um to plan the event again in twenty twenty five. And just want to give you guys a preview of some of the ideas we've come out with, some of the legwork we've done. And as we get closer, you guys are more aware of what's, what's going on. Um, I want to share a quick preview of what we're doing here. So today's presentation, we're gonna do kind of a quick recap on twenty twenty four. We did that a few months ago, but kind of bring back those memories. And uh share some of the new, some of the event details in twenty twenty five, what's new coming up, the projected budget. And then any questions and answers you guys may have. So in twenty twenty four, uh, we have about a hundred seventy six total vendors, sold three hundred and nine wine tasting tickets. Uh, had a good car show with fifty three uh entries. We had two stages with total of ten performances, thirteen total sponsors. Uh, the total revenues for that event was forty six uh forty six thousand four hundred thirty four dollars. Their total expenditures was around fifty four thousand six hundred eighteen. And then they have staff hours. We had a lot of staff. Um, I think Tammy saw me out there at hour eighteen. Um, so, so yeah, we we lost half lot of hours out there. Uh, so in twenty twenty four, there were some of the new things, so kind of go back to twenty twenty three. The council asked us to kind of revitalize and change some things up. So in twenty twenty four, we changed up the festival length, went from two day festival to one day. Uh, we looked at adjusting the fee structures. Uh, the city council approved a update to the fee schedule uh for vendor fees, for sponsorship, for, there's the whole thing there. Uh, the idea was to focus on the community. Um, with the fees that were done previously were. Uh, very expensive, outside the range of what local entrepreneurs can participate in. As we decrease those with the idea of having more local entrepreneurs involved. Uh, the event orientation layout, so we've heard about the nostalgia and wanting. Uh, the event going all the way from Seventh all the way down downtown, or previous years might have been only half of that. Uh, so our goal was to kind of build the whole, the whole Riverbank area pretty much. Uh, organizational controls, so in years past, the city contracted out to third party to run the event. Uh, we actually kept it in house last year. Uh, we put a huge emphasis on the wine tasting uh portion of the event. We heard a lot of complaints in how it was a booze fest as opposed to a nice elegant. Amenity to the event. And then community engagement, we did more community involvement on our social media, got feedback from the community, did little polls to get people involved and excited for the event. So from last year, some of the pauses that we heard from the event was there's a lot of local focus, again, focused on the local entrepreneurs, local businesses, downtown. Uh, we had a lot of vendors that appreciated the layout, the communication, the attention to detail, focused on them. We thought it was well planned out and executed. Um, the city had a constant knowledge of what was going on. So it wasn't as if we're working with a third party and, you know, Councilman may have a question, it's like, okay, let's give someone a call here and hear back from them in a week. You know, we were able to give uh immediate input, answers or um. Feedback on what's going on. And then overall positive feedback of the event, we had a few tweaks that we could fix up, but nothing major. Uh, my favorite comment was, um, it was just like it was when I was growing up. So that was, that was a good, good feel. Some of the improvements we want to do here this year, uh, resource management. We had a lot of organizations not familiar with the city that requested assistance from. From staff to help them out with materials, equipment, staff time. Um, unfortunately, we can't be everywhere at once. And so we, our eighteen and a hundred missed phone calls. It was time to. We look at trying to set boundaries there. Uh, look at additional programming, additional ways to kind of get more people involved with the event. Uh, continue to do more local involvement, get businesses more involved, residents more and uh have more say into what goes on with the event. And then financial recovery, we operated a loss around eight thousand dollars. We want to get as close as we can to at least breaking even. Um, and so we want to get that goal to be a hundred percent. So twenty twenty five event event details, so we are gonna run it back with a one day event on October eleventh, it's Saturday. Um, the event time is ten A M to six P M, okay, here on Santa Fe between Second and Seventh Street. So same kind of footprint there. Um, as of today, we have ninety six total vendors signed up and ready to go. Uh, last year, we had a total of a hundred and seventy signed up. And around this time last year, we had about fifty sign up and ready to go. So we're, we're ahead of schedule where we want to be. Uh, last year and years past, we've done three wine tasting sessions. We wanna. Uh, add one more this year. We want to do a fourth one into the evening and kind of. Uh, cap off the evening as a nice more, not similar to the first three ones, but more of a partyish vibe, want to go there. Yep. The car show, we have our um. We're recording that out with the third party to oversee that. The guy that ran it last year, he's coming back again. Uh, we were very impressed with the car show we had last year, a lot of good feedback. And so he's set, ready to go. And then the entertainment with the staging and all that is getting worked on. And so right now, staff, we're all, and the wheels are starting to. Turn a little bit more and get a little bit faster as we're heading into closer to October. So here's our festival map. It's hard to see. Um, more to kind of happy to, can't see the laser pointer, but. I like some of the things that we'll do. So I'll start from the far left and go east. So you may see like a purple block on there. We're gonna do, that's gonna be our main stage. In previous years, it was in the intersection of Third and Santa Fe. One thing you'll notice is in years past, we've done two stages. We are looking to consolidate that to one stage and host all the entertainment on that one stage. Um, as you go closer out east, you'll notice some big yellow rectangular squares going up and down. Those are gonna be our food vendors that we, similar location we had last year. We are looking at having beer booths again, and they'll be also there in that intersection. Um, as you go further east, you'll see a lot of small red rectangles. We're gonna put the car show right there. Last year, we intended this space to be left empty in hopes that the downtown business would participate, be more active. We had some downtown businesses that were very involved, doing activities while others. Um, chose to be more, more reserved. And so um that's one of the feedback we received is it felt kind of a little bit separated from the event with how empty it was. So we're hoping that moving the car show there has a nice transition, uh, filling up the event. Um, as you are going further out east, all the blue squares going down, those are all vendors, I'm sorry, green squares going down, those are all vendors going down. Um, all the orange circles you see, those are trash cans being placed, blue circles are restrooms. And the big orange diamond shapes, those are activity centers where we're gonna have. So last year, we hosted a kids' corner that required a lot of staff time, a lot of effort. One strategy we're gonna do this year is we're not gonna, I should phrase this, Parks and Recreation is not gonna be running the kids' corner. We have partners all that we've established over the past year and a half. That they're gonna be taking turns running a kids' corner at the library. So for example, we have a local daycare that'll spend an hour to two hours for free activities for kids. And then we have like the local library will provide a couple activities right there for a couple hours. Uh, so instead of us having to plan it all, buy the equipment, have staff man it, uh, we're gonna rely on our partners to help us out with that. Um, we have the wine tasting at the community center again. And then you'll notice there's another orange diamond on the teen center. Uh, one of the things that we're gonna test out is we're gonna host a day of daycare at the teen center. Uh, where parents could drop off their kids, can go explore the event. Uh, we'll be charging for that. So it'll be a nice revenue source to help bring in some money. And uh we'll have some, we'll have staff in there to host some activities, games. Um, keep the kids busy in a nice, safe and supervised area.
So, so Michael, now it makes sense for that fourth session you were talking about.
Yeah, I know, right?
I got you now.
We, I do mind Louise. We have shown this map to the local sheriff's apartment. They said as of right now, it looks good. Uh, we jumped to other uh city staff, gone the same feedback. Um, this map is definitely set to change, so it's not set in stone. Um, as things start developing or concerns are raising, we can always adjust. Uh, one thing that we are looking at doing and talked with uh the sheriff's department, got their input on this. Downtown, one of the biggest issues we had is we had fencing downtown as there is alcohol served in that area. Uh, we had one access point into the main event coming off of uh Fourth Street. Uh, we had a lot of uh, in a lot of people in the community, a lot of seniors, uh, those with disabilities. Park closer to Second, trying to get in and we, they were told, hey, you have to go around the fourth and it was very difficult. So one thing we are looking at doing is to lower or lower the amount of fencing that we have. And so what we'll do is we'll have, uh, partnering with Ontario Security again, um, they'll have officers on each. I guess exit point. So you look at kind of Topeka and Third, Stanislaus and Third, the intersection of Third and Fourth. Uh, we'll have a officer set up right there with signage saying no alcohol passes point. And kind of allow it to be open so people can still enter the event with great accessibility. We were so monitoring, making sure that is a safe event for the community. Uh, we do plan on continuing having concrete block blockades on uh street points. So that way, uh, we hopefully avoid a major catastrophe. we hopefully avoid a major catastrophe or incident. That's kind of the map layout that we have right now. Oh, and then also in the Plaza del Rey, we'll still have tables and chairs for eating, as we did last year. In front of the stage, we have, we're planning on setting up chairs to allow public to go sit down and enjoy watching this, watching the entertainment that's there. We are looking to do, again, since we are consolidating down to one stage, have a very diverse offering. And so we will have our dancing forces back again this year. We're gonna be talking with Ballet Folclorico, different entertainment. And so when we go with our work, with our contractor, that's one thing we want to make sure is very diverse offerings. So new in 2025, last year was our first year running, so we're just kind of finding who can do what. Now that we've got our kind of good feel for it, we're starting to request proposals for everything we're doing. So try and get the good, the best cost we can get, now that we know what we're looking for. That goes for those that are serving alcohol, for stage entertainment. We've got proposals for restrooms, fencing, everything. And so we're gonna make sure we get the best price that we can. New activities, so like mentioned before, we're looking for a fourth wine tasting, childcare, and potentially drone show at the end of the night. The event layouts changed up a little bit, so we moved the car show around. The main stage, we're looking at doing the one on between Second and Third. And then looking, relocating alcohol booths to make sure we try to find ways of getting more money from, from people getting drunk. So, and then cost reduction, we're just taking stat, entertainment to one stage. Establishing partnerships for people to take on more roles like the kids' corner, so it's less staff, have to be there all day. And just other matters we're trying to look at.
Michael, if you are successful with the, the drone grant, what's kind of the plan there?
It's me, Louis, no. So, so we applied for a grant for that would cover hopefully half the cost of the drone show. We've gotten quotes, the lowest quote we got is eighteen thousand, and so they'd cover about nine thousand of it. So nine thousand dollars we need to come from sponsorships or our revenue from the event. And so we'll talk about it when we look at the budget. Maybe that'd be some feedback we can hear. But that's, that's kind of feedback there. We're looking at, to do the drone show, it'll be in the evening, obviously. And they don't, they need open spaces set up, and they don't do it above people, so it doesn't fall and hit someone. And so we've outlined a couple of locations, the primary one, you know, if we are successful, we'll approach the school district to have used their green space, see if they allow us to set up there. If that's not a viable option, we do have a couple of other smaller locations set up. So here's the budget, I put in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and the proposed budget. I'll highlight this year's. So for our revenues, we are looking at for festival revenues about twenty, close to twenty-one thousand. Last year, we did about eighteen thousand, and those were just on our vendors. One note with the festival revenues. Last year, we did the car show, the vendor that did it, he did it for free, so no expenses on our end, but he also cut all the revenues, that was kind of the trade-off there. This year, he is wanting a fee, and so the trade-off is, well, then we collect the revenues. And so we include the, the projected revenues from the car show into the total festival revenues. Beer sales, we project four thousand. We have talked with multiple groups on nonprofits and partners who, that could, you know, serve the alcohol for us as we don't have the capacity to do so. A lot of them are looking at, hey, we'd love to do so, but there is gonna be a cut of revenue that we want to, you know, revenue split there. And so that is a projected revenue split, so that's after we've paid everyone out. The wine tasting revenues, thirteen thousand eight hundred, and that includes the tickets that were projected, plus that fourth session. Sponsorship revenue, we hang around ten thousand. Some of you may know sponsorship's getting harder and harder each day to, you come along. So we did have great partners last year that enjoyed their time, we expect to come back. But, you know, kind of be on more on the conservative side there. Merchandise, twenty-three thousand, we do have the wine glasses that we're looking at. And that also includes the daycare that we're looking at doing. And then miscellaneous nine thousand, that's the grant if we get awarded. And so if we don't get that nine thousand dollar grant, you're looking around fifty thousand dollars, a little bit north of fifty thousand dollars total revenue projected. And then if we want to go down to expenditures, we have a ninety-five hundred budget for advertising, last year we about, spent about seventy-six hundred. So that one's easy to lower down if we decide to do so. One of the requests that we've gone from council is we use, reuse banners from previous years that you saw across town, there's some comments of it's time to make them a little bit more nicer, prettier. So we threw in some, a couple more dollars or a few hundred dollars in there to make sure that we update those and get that taken care of. We also got a request to put banners downtown, be on like the light poles, and so we have some money there to kind of make it look nice. Entertainment, you see it's a big jump for thirty thousand five hundred, that includes the eighteen thousand dollar drone show if awarded. Other than that, we are looking at the car show and the entertain, and the main stage entertainment. That also includes the stage, the lighting, the sound, all that. Rents and leases, you're looking at your portable restrooms, your fencing. That is a solid number quote we got today, or not today, this past week, and that's the lowest we found. It's the same company we worked with last year, so we are confident, working with them, we have a good relationship with them. Professional services, you'll notice there's zero there and zero before, and then before that, it was a few thirteen thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars. That was to, for the third party to come in and do the work. So with staff kind of doing it in-house, we don't have that professional services contract. Have to worry about permits and licenses. When we do these kinds of events, we do have to get some permitting through the county with the food trucks and all that. We're expecting a little bit more of an increase of vendors, and so we see the number go up a little bit. Website, media, and event bright, so you know, zero dollars there. The year before, we spent seven hundred seventy-five dollars. That's our website fee, we paid for like a four, five year, years in advance, so we're covered for this year already. Security, we're at twenty-five, or twenty-five hundred dollars. Again, we talked to Ontario Security, last year they sponsored the event by providing the security for free. We're in talks with them to run it back again. We don't have it official yet, so that's why we include it there just in case. But that's set right there, so that number can easily be decreased a little bit. Supplies, we're at ten thousand nine hundred twenty-eight. Can't think of what I'm talking about, why that is, but that's what the number we got. I can, when I pull this picture, I can get you that. Temporary labor, looking at staffing, our part-time staffing. Wine and beer expenses, you'll notice that is about half the price from last year. We did buy a ton of wine last year that is still good and stored properly that we don't have to take on those expenses this year. And then a miscellaneous, we're looking at, we, hopefully everything's accounted for and tied into an item, so we don't have any weird expenses. So you notice the expenditures are sixty-nine thousand four hundred seventy-four, making us a loss in nine thousand five hundred ninety-nine, which leads to the discussion of, you know, if we do the drone show, is it worth it or not going to the red? If we don't do the drone show, we're looking at a loss less than a thousand as of right now. Obviously, if we get security taken, taken care of right there and other items we could decrease, we could be in the red, in the blue, hopefully on the positive side, or at least closer to that zero, so. Any questions from council, that's my like slides questions, but I want to make sure we're all here, because I imagine there might be some questions on budget.
Questions or comments from council? Is it possible maybe to have somebody, a company or somebody sponsor the drone show?
Yeah, it definitely is possible. I mean, with the drone show, you give them logos that they can create with the, the show. Again, but going back to sponsorship, it's just hard to come across sponsors nowadays, especially with this, the drone show being a, the first one and because it's been our second year, kind of coming back on the upswing with the event. Also, we're looking with the sponsors to offset other costs of the event. So I mean, if there's someone that wants to give us nine thousand dollars, we'd more than gladly take it and run with it. But, but, yeah.
I mean, the only thing I'd say is if we can just do an intentional push for Spanish language advertising, but I don't see that as an additional cost. It's more just intentionality around it.
Yeah, I think last year, we had staff that focused on English, Spanish on social media. One of the, the one side that we kind of felt sure was the radio. We did, they mainly did English ads, so we can definitely look at throwing some money out to get some Spanish created ads on the radio. Along with keeping up with our social media and English and Spanish on this stuff, so.
Thank you. This looks great. That's it, okay. Thank you so much.
Public comment, this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council LRE board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon.
Ms. Lori.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lori Fail, hook, gum, bling, burnel, so hustle my bustle, but bling in your spring. But tonight, we're here representing the Chamber of Commerce, and we just wanted to share a few events that are coming up just shortly, for instance, and it's all open to all of you as well. But the first one is we're going to have here in city council, we're going to go with, it says, Grow Smarter, Not Harder, How to Use AI to Boost Your Business. So it's an hour and a half, five-thirty to seven, and it is a free session. So we invite you all to come, and I provided some information for you to share. And then on May twenty-first, we're doing a lunch and learn, and it's going to be at, where's this one? Oh, Pizza Plus. Anyway, it's the twenty-first from twelve to one. So we're gonna be talking about, it's Boost Your Website and Store Traffic with Radio and Digital Advertisement. So as we're going into the digital age, we all need to, if we want to keep up with the growth technology, regardless of our age, we need to get behind it and not be afraid. Just go for it and see where you land. And then we have, we're having our Business Expo on June twelfth from five to seven-thirty. And it's going to be at the community center. And it is for local vendors that are part of the chamber. It is a free event for them. If you're a non-member of the chamber, it's twenty-five dollars. So we have limited space, but also provided the flyer. And on the back, if you know of a vendor or you want to participate yourself, there is an application to fill out. It is on the website, unfortunately, right now, we are not able to fill out on the website, but we're working towards getting the new technology up to speed so that our website is very functional. So, thank you.
And hi, I'm Olivia Ramula, Broken Order Timeless Real Estate and Director of Community Events for Riverbank Chamber of Commerce. Just a couple of things I want to go over real quick, we are looking for a position to fill right now on our chamber. We're looking for directors, mainly a director that can be our secretary. So if you are qualified and an active Riverbank Chamber member for a minimum of a year, please pick up the application on our website and send it back to us, we'll be doing interviews for that. And then also, we do have a questionnaire that we have out that we are trying to get feedback. Right now, it's just on paper, but we're working on a digital aspect of that as well. And then we just wanted to share that with the Easter egg event. We did have a date that we secured for next year, it's going to be the week before Easter, which is gonna be March twenty-eighth, I want to say, and we're gonna restructure things to get more visibility for people in the afternoon to shop the vendors. And on top of that, we were positive on this year over a thousand dollars for the Easter egg hunt this year. So thank you guys all who came and helped, thank you.
Ms. Conrato?
Good evening, mayor and council members, city council members. My name is Karen Conrato, I live on Hoag Road. I'm here to let you know that I oppose the proposed Riverwalk project. I have concerns with sprawl, leapfrogging, annexation, avoid building homes on a flood plain in a flood zone, loss of prime ag land, which means loss of fresh, high-quality, reasonably priced food. And the continued increase in cost of sewage, water, electricity, and traffic. And I feel that the North Corridor will not absorb the number of vehicles that the proposed Riverwalk project would generate, easily over ten thousand vehicles. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Michael Christie?
Hi, good evening, mayor and everybody, I'm Michael Christie, I live over in Crossroads East. And I just wanted to, tonight, come to you and ask, as a community, Crossroads members, what we, what we can do to support the Sierra House. There's been so much discussion, and I know that it was, it was hard on you, it's got a little heated with the transitional housing projects, I'm coming to you, trying to do, see what we can do as a community to support the Sierra House. I would, I would sure like to see more social media about it. I don't know the legal aspects, if the city can post on Instagram, and if it could be a sponsored ad, and maybe some of us in the community can sponsor the ads. I don't know how that works, but I would love to, love to see what we can do to support them. Many of my neighbors don't even know about the Sierra House, so unfortunately. And also, over the last couple of weeks, I've had some great conversations. I want to thank council member Yedebay first time, council member Fossey. Mayor Hernandez invited me to our coffee and meet and greet, and had a great discussion with you all, and I really appreciate it. And always, I always keep in touch with council member Call. And sorry, council member Feminale, I haven't called you yet, went on vacation, shame on me for that, that, but had some great conversations with you, and I want to encourage the community and my friends that might be listening at home tonight. You don't go on social media to criticize anybody. Reach out to them, reach out to, you know, these other council members aren't, don't represent my district, you know, they hardly know me, but they still take the time to listen and meet with me. So just want to encourage everybody, if you have a concern, you know, reach out to them, send them an email, leave them a voicemail, they will, they will get back to you. And I really, and I, I really appreciate that. My friends that were here the last meeting, I know a lot of them appreciated that too as well, so. Again, so I'm looking forward to hearing from the council what we can do to support Sierra House and help them out. Thank you very much.
Sammy Martinez? Oh, okay. Daryl Daniel?
Hello, my name is Daryl Daniel from three, four, four, two, Atchison Street, District One, I guess. I wanted to say thank you for going to my anniversary thing. Actually, all of you actually went at different times, but it was still, it's, you got it there. So that's what was very good, to do the ribbon cutting. My brother was very excited, I showed the picture to my dad in Palm Desert, he was so excited about that, because he's the one that built all the Snow Whites in there so many years ago. The, let's see, the other is, well, Rick can probably explain it more than I can, but the Historical Society on Sunday, the eighteenth, it's at from nine to one, I believe. Rick can always explain that. I might be one of the helpers to doing the pancakes. It's not an omelet due to the egg problem, whatever it is. There will be some eggs and sausage and pancakes and things like that. So it's a really good, hopefully, the wood gets out, because I've been there many, many of years, decades. And they've had a full thing, and it's really good for the Historical Society. So I think it's a really good thing to try to, and I am, I see more and more little bit of stuff where they're not just segregating, that's new, and this is the old, you know, kind of deal. It's, it took a long time for them to get over that Berlin Wall, I call it the, the river tracks. And now I guess they're gonna even build, you know, another, besides Claus Road, another train. I guess, is that going over the, the district, whatever it was, where it's gonna go over the train tracks? Because having Claus, having Atchison Street being the one and only to get over the tracks is something else, like they're going to my place. So, yay. And hopefully, everyone has gotten their free ice cream at one time or another at Snow White. So, and if you, we still do our Thursday night classic hot rods, as long as it's not raining. And we have, it's from about four to seven. So, anyway, hope to see you on Sunday. Thanks.
That is all I have for public comment in the chamber, I do have one on Zoom. Ms. Prieto Diaz, can you unmute?
Uh, yes, hi, can you hear me? Oh, can you hear me?
Ms. Diaz, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Ms. Diaz, I believe you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Uh-oh.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Amazing, thank you, apologies everyone, good evening. Amazing. Thank you. Apologies, everyone. Good evening. I am Cynthia Prieto Diaz and I am here today as a public health analyst, civic scientist and a neighbor to champion a healthier Riverbank through civic engagement. So I love that we were able to recognize mental health awareness. I also wanted to recognize the recent and very concerning increase in suspected overdoses and poisonings in our county and how that connects with other substance use like tobacco and how that impacts mental well-being on individuals. I also super appreciate, and I'm running out of breath because I get so excited to share this information with you, but I, I, I do want to continue to celebrate our amazing public health team. So I love that as well. And I do think that as a town, we can definitely make their job easier. So happy to continue to provide data to this group and to elevate more tobacco controlled or Riverbank and Stanislaus County because we know that it strains our healthcare system as well as pollutes our environment. I would also be excited to continue to share proactive ideas like the Adopt a Drain program. So happy to follow up with that and provide other opportunities to move away from cleanups because yes, they're great, but I, I think we really need to be preventing the litter and just going along Patterson Road, you will see a plethora of cigarette butts, especially at bus stops. So again, here to make Riverbank safer, cleaner and a healthier place for all of us to live and thrive in and to help protect our young people from nicotine products. So I'm ready to work with all of you and I also invite you to connect with me outside of this. Thank you.
That is all on Zoom and then we did receive a couple of written comments. The first one is from Ms. Katrina Kuchery. Dear members of the Riverbank City Council, on behalf of myself and others in the community, I want to extend our heartfelt thanks for the time, care and thoughtful attention you dedicated to evaluating the proposed tiny home project. We sincerely appreciate your commitment to ensuring the project was thoroughly examined, not just for feasibility, but for how well it would serve the, the needs and character of our city. Thank you especially for choosing not to approve the waiver and instead holding the project to the high standards Riverbank deserves. Your decision to reinforce the message that any development in our town should be thoughtfully planned and professionally executed, not something brushed or put together without care. A special thank you to Stacy who consistent, who consistently availability, openness and communication built a sense of trust and transparency throughout the process. We also want to recognize Louise for taking the time to meet with us personally and hear our concerns with genuine interest. Many thanks to Gabriela Hernandez for taking the time to read our email letters even while sick and losing her voice. We truly appreciate everyone's support. It means a great deal to know that our voices were heard and respected. Your leadership and willingness to engage with the community show that your decisions are made not just for today, but with the long-term well-being of Riverbank in mind. With deep, with deep appreciation, Katrina Kuchery. And then the next one is from Ms. Mari Cris Carasa. Dear City Council members, we appreciate the time and thoughtfulness you devoted to hearing the Crossroads community. Your engagement, research and willingness to meet with residents made a meaningful impact. It is clear that each of you took this decision seriously and considered the long-term implications for our city. We want to especially acknowledge Councilmember Stacy called District Four's representative for her, for her consistent presence and responsiveness, responsiveness throughout this process. Her leadership and care stood out in the moment that called for both courage and clarity. We also want to recognize Councilmember Luis Orive from District One for taking the time to meet with Crossroads community members, both individually and as a group. His openness and ability meant a great deal to those directly impacted. We're genuinely grateful that the council recognized the difference between supporting a project and, and ensuring it aligns with Riverbank's long-term goals. Your decision reflects a commitment to thoughtful, responsible development rooted in the city's values. By approaching this issue with discernment, you've set a tone for sustainable growth and meaningful progress. Your choice supports Riverbank's vision as outlined in the general plan and the crossroads specific plan. A small town atmosphere that is quiet, friendly and connected, walkable, safe and welcoming to neighborhoods, especially for families with children. Balanced growth that protects open space and enhances quality of life for current and future residents. Thank you for your leadership and care in shaping the future of our city. We look forward to continuing this shared work, building a Riverbank that reflects the best of who we are. A grounded community guided by values and driven by purpose with respect and gratitude, Mari Cris Carasa. And that is all I have for public comments.
Thank you. All right. Consent calendar. Item nine point one, waive readings. Item nine point two, approve all city council and local redevelopment authority board minutes for April twenty second, twenty twenty five. Item nine three, resolution to waive the rental fees for the community center and the community center gazebo for the Riverbank Historical Society, Mujeres Mexicanas de Accion and Sully Entertainment. Item nine point four, resolution declaring city on property a surplus land in compliance with the Surplus Land Act. Anything called for consideration or discussion or a motion?
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated.
Second. Roll call, please. Councilmember Orive?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten point one, a resolution authorizing a two point three inflationary adjustment increase to the city Riverbank system development fees based on the construction cost index to be effective May fifteen, twenty twenty five.
Your Assistant City Manager, Tammy Elcandar, will provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. So tonight I will be presenting the item for the system development fee two point three percent inflationary adjustment. So system development fees are defined as a charge by a local government agency to help fund and pay for the construction or needed expansion of infrastructure and improvements as related to new development. The purpose of these fees are to defray all or a portion of the cost of public facilities related to the development project. The inflationary adjustment, the last comprehensive fee update in May of twenty twenty four, which was effective May fifteenth of twenty four, was a nine point four percent increase. Our resolution two thousand fifteen dash twenty one adopted the system development fees and authorized an inflationary adjustment based on the construction cost index, CCI by city, and it's published by the Engineering News Record. Based on DGS California Construction Cost Index produced by E N R for twenty twenty four, the annual CCI for California is two point three percent. So here is the twenty twenty five fee levels if they are approved and they would be effective May fifteenth of twenty twenty five. So sorry. And it is a nine point three percent, or I'm sorry, two point three percent increase. And the fee schedule or the fee uses for residential include the clustered rural, lower density, medium density, higher density and a mixed use. And then we have our commercial that include community, commercial, mixed use, industrial and business park. And that you can see that these fees are charged at a little different method where residential is by a dwelling unit and commercial is by square footage. Increase per land use, so for our non-residential, the per square footage, community commercial went to one, is up one point zero six, a dollar six. Mixed use is a dollar eight, industrial, business park, a dollar five. And then the office would be seventy nine cents per square foot. And for the dwelling, the residential, the clustered rural is up one thousand seven hundred and forty one dollars. And that is across all for a total of all the fees. The lower density is thirteen hundred and fifty eight dollars, medium density is a thousand seventy eight, higher density is nine forty seven and the mixed use would be up nine hundred and fifty seven dollars. So it is recommended that the city council consider adopting a resolution tonight authorizing the two point three percent inflationary increase to the twenty twenty five system development fees. And I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? All right. What about the, so this is a public hearing, correct? I will open it for public hearing. Any questions or comments from the public?
Mayor, there is no one on Zoom wishing to speak.
Close this public hearing and I'll bring it back to the council.
I make a motion, we approve the ten point one. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Orive?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Two, and you're hanging out for this next item, right?
I am.
Okay. Eleven point one, resolution accepting the annual financial report for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four.
All right. So tonight I'm excited to present this because it's been a little task to get to this finish line. But with the audit tonight, this makes us current on all of our audits. There were a few years where we were behind that this makes us current. So it's very exciting to be able to present this tonight. And so this presentation will provide you a structured overview of the city's financial standing, reporting both government-wide and fund-specific insights. Our objective is transparency, demonstrating stewardship of public resources and strategic planning for future growth. The audit covers the period ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty four and is prepared in accordance with the Government Accounting Standard Board's Statement Number Thirty Four. This ensures consistency and comparability with other municipalities while offering stakeholders a clear view of the city's fiscal health. The data and interpretations in this report have been compiled by city's management team, including Assistant City Manager, and we welcome questions and discussions as we walk through the key highlights. So I will be showing you the purpose of the audit, the overview of financial statements, statement of net position, fund financial statements, key financial highlights, net position overview, governmental activities, business-type activities and general fund performance with a conclusion. So first off, what is an audit, what is the purpose of an audit? Cities are required to conduct an annual financial audit by an independent accounting firm. Gallagher Gateway has now completed the audit for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, which I am presenting tonight for the city council's acceptance. The government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States mandates that the local government entities undergo an annual financial audit. The purpose of the audit is to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatements. Auditors perform measures to gather evidence supporting the accuracy of the amounts and disclosures of these statements. As part of the process, the audit firm evaluates the risk of material misstatements, whether due to fraud or error. Additionally, auditors assess whether the city has adequate internal controls in place to prevent fraud and minimize the risk of errors in the financial records. The city received an unqualified opinion for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, indicating that the auditors concluded the city compiled with, excuse me, complied with all applicable accounting standards and that its financial reports accurately reflect its financial condition. So overview of our financial statements, the annual financial report does begin with a management discussion and analysis, commonly referred to as M D N A, which is prepared by city staff. And it highlights key details with the financial statements. This section provides the general public with an overview of the city's financial position, including factors that influence changes, whether they be positive or negative. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board, often referred to as G A S B, which establishes accounting standards for government entities, requires financial statements to be presented in two formats. A governmental, a government-wide financial statement that provides a broad overview of the city's overall financial status, similar to reports issued by private sector entities. And the government-wide statement of net position and statement of activities provide information about the activities of the city as a whole and present a long-term view of the city's finances. Fund financial statements, these focus on the city's most significant funds, offering a more detailed financial perspective rather than a citywide view. So statement of net position serves as our key indicator whether the city's financial position is improving or declining. And there are two categories, the governmental activities and the proprietary activities. Governmental activities include services such as police, public works, community development grants, special programs and general government. These activities are primarily funded by taxes and intergovernmental, governmental revenues, including sales tax, property tax, vehicle license fees, users fees, franchise fees and federal and state grants. The proprietary activities covers the city's water and sewer system as well as the community center and our local, our L R A. These services are funded through fees and rents charged to customers. So this is the picture of a screenshot from the audit of our net position. And this, as noted earlier, the net position may serve over time as a useful indicator of the city's financial position. In this table showing the city's net position as of June thirtieth of twenty four, compared to the city's net position of June thirtieth of twenty three. Twenty, the twenty twenty four is in the green columns. As of twenty twenty four, the city holds a combined net position of one hundred and thirty eight point one million across all activities. This figure represents the net value of all assets minus liabilities and reflects the city's financial health. So our net position overview, some highlights to note of the net position, a major, the majority of about sixty one percent or eighty three point seven million is tied to capital assets like roads, buildings, infrastructures. While these assets support vital services, they aren't liquid and can't fund other obligations. An additional twenty two percent is restricted by law or policy for specific programs and services. Importantly, nearly twenty three point four million remains unrestricted. This portion serves as, as Riverbank's financial or fiscal cushion and enables responsive funding for community priorities, emergencies or economic opportunities. The city's net position continues to reflect long-term fiscal strength and prudent financial planning. So changes in net position in the governmental financial statement, the statement of activity provides the changes in net position. This provides a broad overview of the government's revenues and expenses, showing how the cost of governmental and business-type activities are funded, either through charges for services, grants or general like revenues, like taxes. Total revenue for the year exceeded expenditures by six point one million. This table is showing the governmental and proprietary activities of the city for the year, their year ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. And it also has the compared to the year ending of June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. So some of the key financial highlights from this would be our governmental surplus. Revenues exceeded expenditures by two point six million with a ninety four point nine million in net position. Business-type profitability, which is our enterprise operations, saw three point four nine million in net income with a twenty five point nine eight percent revenue growth. And our general fund stability, the fund balance is at ten point seven, which is down six point two percent from the prior year, yet we are still meeting our reserve requirements. So fund financial statements include general fund, C D B G, successor R D A, L M I, housing and system development fees. And then all of our other funds are listed in these statements as other funds. Under this, they are categorized by- Under this, they are categorized by specific activities, while other funds are grouped under the other funds. As part of the structure, major funds are consolidated under a single heading, and general fund includes our primary general fund, our benefit liabilities fund, our fleet services, and our recreation fund. This structure approach provides clarity in evaluating the city's financial state, status, and ensures transparency in financial reporting. So where's, where's the city's money came from and went governmental recap? So our day-to-day money in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, Riverbank brought in twenty four point four million through sales tax, property tax, and various governmental grants. That's our total revenue for the cities, for city services. We spent about twenty one point eight million. That includes running our police department, fixing streets, community programs, city hall operations. About one-third of that went to public works, which keeps our city running smoothly. After all the math, we ended up with the year with a solid two point six million in surplus, which means we are spending responsibly and still setting some aside. We're proud to keep services strong without going over our budget. General fund snapshot, so as stated, our general fund ended up with a ten point seven million fund balance, which was down about six point two percent. And although it was a slight dip from last year, our revenue did grow by thirteen percent, which was partly from more homes being built, brought in, which brought in the building permit fees. Our property tax income went up, and we earned more on our interest thanks to rising rates. I will note that our sales tax revenue actually decreased in this, in twenty three, twenty four, even though our spending was a little bit higher. And we had that, some of that was due to some legal fees and legal settlement, and then some increased cost for added personnel and housing element. And we still came in under budget one point two million.
Tammy, quick question, if you can go back one slide. Our tax sharing agreement, how, what percentage of the thirteen percent is the tax sharing agreement? Just kind of curious.
I don't have that number off.
Okay. Just a follow-up, thank you.
Sorry, I can follow up with you, yes. And so how our city services performed, our water, sewer, and community facilities. We earned twelve point two million from service fees, which was up from the prior year. Our cost held steady, spending slightly rose about eight point seven percent, even with improvements underway. Oops. That doesn't make sense there, sorry about that. And but we, on the cost side, we kept things efficient, and they, it did increase about nine percent to cover maintenance and facility improvements. These included upgrades to our wastewater system and energy-efficient projects. At the end of the year, these services had a three point five million surplus. That extra money is going back into our services to keep things running clean, safe, and reliable. Capital assets, so as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty four, our governmental fund had fifty nine million invested in capital assets, and our business-type activities accounted for thirty point five million. This represents a total investment of eighty nine point six million in a diverse range of capital assets, including land, construction in progress, buildings, equipment, and infrastructure, such as our streets, sidewalks, and storm drains. Some of our major capital asset additions from fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, a pavement restoration project, Sierra House remodel, Topeka Street improvement project, Roselle Avenue sidewalk project, Third Street parking lot construction, Sierra House day use facility, Castleburg Park Trail project, and our well number thirteen test well. And just a note of our long-term debt, as of June thirtieth and twenty four. In our governmental side, we have our compensated absences. This is consisting of vacation and comp time, compensatory time off earned by employees but not yet taken. These balances are due and payable to employees upon separation if any unused balance exists. Most of our long-term debt is tied to capital projects that support public services and cannot be liquidated for other purposes. Repayment must come from revenue sources other than the assets themselves. Our business-type activities, I have our listed our loans there, which is the wastewater treatment plant loan from two thousand and four, which was an energy upgrade then. And then we have our most recent one for the solar energy upgrade, and our water lease is for our meter upgrade, and then our compensated absences within the business-type activities. So we have a total long-term obligation of seven point nine million. That is my presentation, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council? Yes, thank you, Tammy. You summarized what I'm sure was a lot of work.
And so I'll just add, my last slide is that it is recommended the city council consider adopting a resolution accepting the annual financial report for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public?
Mayor, there is no one on Zoom.
All right, I'm gonna bring it back. I was hoping that we'd see the, I'm not a numbers person, but the pie graph was a great illustration of what our budget looks like. It's well-balanced, it's healthy, and it shows the importance that we're putting into each segment of how we're spending money. So there's not an imbalance anywhere, and I think that speaks volumes on how the city is spending the money. And just to add a little bit, we, it's up to us to ensure that we're, the revenues that were boosted sometimes could be one-time, or maybe some of the new building we have, there's so much volatility in taxes. Overall, the county has seen a decrease in sales tax, whereas Riverbank has seen an increase. But I mean, ensuring that this revenue stays consistent. Marisa and I had a conversation in passing about ensuring things like legal, that inflationary adjustments are included in contracts moving forward for new development and construction, so that we're not eating costs for different construction projects. But yeah, amazing work. Anything else in the motion?
Good job, Tammy. Unless there's any other comments, I'll make a motion. Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item eleven point one.
Second. Roll call, please.
Council member Uribe?
Yes.
Council member Pimentel?
Yes.
Council member Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. And council reports, city manager.
So this upcoming Monday, May nineteenth, the city council will be holding its strategic planning session starting at nine A M. in the Riverbank Industrial Complex, and that's going to be inside Building Eighteen. Join us for Food Court Fridays at the Sports Complex during the month of May. So the next upcoming one is this Friday, May sixteenth, and then there'll be one on the twenty third, and the last one will wrap up on May thirtieth. That's from six to nine P M. at the Sports Complex. There's going to be a soft opening of our Riverbank Pool. The lifeguards have been working hard over the past two weeks to get all of their certifications for all of our newer lifeguards, and for those that are coming back to us or getting recertified. So we'll be having a soft opening on May twenty fourth from three to seven, and admission is free to all. And then this Saturday is our second Riverbank Night Market. That'll be here in downtown Riverbank from five to nine P M. And that is all from Saturday.
Thank you, Councilmember Uribe.
Thank you, Rachel. So I want to give a shout out to Michael for bringing up Sierra House. Sierra House, they did just put out their wish list. They're, me and Councilmember Call are going to be putting out, I'm going to call it an item drive, but Councilmember Call is way more creative on Instagram, so kind of look out for that. We're trying to help secure kind of those items that they're kind of in need of. I did have the opportunity to meet with a community relations manager from Save Mark. They kind of just discuss engagement opportunities and ways the partner for here in the city. So there's opportunities for the chamber, there was opportunities there for Parks and Rec. So I, I'm just trying to get on Michael's good side. He loves partnerships, anything I can kind of help him out with. I had a meeting with the Housing Authority at the McRitchie Community Center Ribbon Cutting. They had mentioned they were in transition, moving over to a kind of a Section A voucher program there for their ninety units. So I wanted to get a little bit more detail on there. Kind of raised, I kind of shared my concern about the talks at the federal level as far as them kind of eliminating that and just making sure that they're aware, do they have any, you know, concerns there? Just, just a, we're both kind of just watching it very closely. And then finally, at the League of Cities, they're going to be doing a Veterans Roundtable on five twenty-two. As a fellow veteran, I've been pushing for this committee, and it's finally kind of launching. So this is kind of like the, the beginning stages of this committee kind of forming. So we'll be exchanging ideas on how cities are supporting veterans across the state. So and then how we can assist and support veterans locally. And then just having future discussions on what should we be discussing in this committee? So it's a brand-new committee, we're kind of forming it up. So if anybody has any ideas or would like to just kind of give me some feedback, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I attended some grand openings. One of them was Chase Bank, yay, they're here, and they're new, the new bank for City of Riverbank. I attended our city team building while we were gone for three weeks. That was great to see everybody's idea where they want to go and why they ran for office. That was pretty exciting. I attended the Pioneer Park dedication. One of the new parks over by Scout Hall and the Corporation Yard. And of course, McRitchie Community Center grand opening. It was nice to see Scott recommend, recognize for his services. As was discussed before, after Mother's Day Pancake Breakfast is this Sunday, sponsored by the Riverbank Historical Society and the Riverbank Federated Women's Club. It's nine to one at the community center. You can purchase tickets at the door. It's twenty dollars for an adult, ten dollars for kids, and under five, eat free. Next Tuesday, I will be having a meet the vice mayor at the Riverbank Museum, which is just behind this building. Five to seven, we'll have cookies and lemonade, and you can meet me, ask me questions. Please don't ask me anything hard. But you can also come in and see the museum and what history we have in there. It's pretty cool. Also, next Tuesday is the Women's Group Meeting, the Riverbank Federated Women's Group, six thirty at Scout Hall. I talked with Maricela on Monday. She didn't mention this, so I will. I'm sure you've seen on Facebook where P G N E, I believe it's Oakdale, is asking them, asking to take out P G N E or whatever, to go to M I D. And just so you know, that has been discussed here at the City Riverbank, and it is just not economically feasible. So we will not be looking into that in case anybody was interested. And also, when driving through crossroads, guys, I see the garage sale signs, and it's over. So please go out and bring down your signs when you're done, so that they don't litter up the poles, and I've seen a couple of them on the ground. I can't stop because I'm driving, but please remember to take down your garage sale signs. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pimentel.
A lot of mine is what was mentioned, but I'll go ahead and mention it. What they said. April twenty eighth, I attended the Team Building, which was very important. I got to learn a lot about co-council. On the twenty ninth, I attended the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Poll with the thirty-one cities, and it's nice to see how other cities are paying attention to Riverbank. I heard some great things about Riverbank. I too went to the Food Court. We had a Sister City booth with information for Sister City. Lot of positive feedback from the community, which is exciting to hear. And I attended the Pioneer Park Ribbon Cutting Ceremony in my district. Very important for the children. And I do want to encourage people to come to the farmer's market at night. Let's support our local vendors. They work really hard, and that's what Riverbank is all about. Sunday, May fifteenth, Vice Mayor Fosse convinced me to help make pancakes. Let's see how that goes at the community center. So and on Monday, the nineteenth, at five thirty to seven, I'll have my first meet and greet, which is going to be at thirty-two oh eight Stanislaw Street. Like Vice Mayor, please no hard questions. It's a meet and greet. Get to know each other, and you can follow me on Facebook at John C. Pimentel. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Call.
So Mayor Hernandez and I were at the City Leaders Summit after our last council meeting. We did office visits with Assemblymember Flora and Alanise, as long as Senator Alvarado Gill. We were able to advocate for initiatives to keep homeless regulation within city control. And I know that sounds like a lot of information, but at least it gives us a say in how things are managed, rather than the state having complete control over how the homeless population is being managed. And then the need for housing in California, it's a huge conversation. We hear it every time we come up here. But it is recognized that we need a good portion of affordable housing and just housing as a whole. I think we need two and a half million houses in California and one million of them being affordable housing. And then there's a need for the state and local officials to better collaborate, to build sustainable pathways to housing and care to combat the homelessness. And there is a big emphasis on restoring public safety with Proposition Thirty-Six, which was a common sense proposition passed by voters, and how we need to hold our representatives accountable to take action. The overall theme of the Cal Cities Summit was to listen to voters and to fund what matters. On four twenty-eight, I attended the Team Building as well. It was an opportunity for us to align our goals and to kind of see where we see Riverbank in twenty-five years. A lot of good conversation came out of that. Some of us have bigger dreams than others, but one thing we promise is to keep Michael Patton busy. And then I also went to the Multi-Chamber Mixer, I'm surprised many of you saw that, at the Collective Space that the Riverbank Chamber had the opportunity to host. But other partner chambers were there, and Santa Sal Satino, who is a Latino chamber, who is a big partner of the city, was there. I dipped out early to head over to Scout Hall for the Boy Scouts meeting. It was an interesting dynamic to go from being around nothing but business people and adults to go talk to five to ten-year-olds. I had good engagement. They love pizza parks. It was established that there is no room for a pizza parlor to leave Riverbank, so that was reassuring. But it was really awesome to break down how I'm a scout too, but I'm a scout for the city, where there are Boy Scouts and there's some girls a part of the group. But it's an opportunity for them to find their way of being a leader within our community. So that was a really fun way to connect the dots, I can say. Last week, I celebrated Small Business Week as a small business owner. I visited some of our businesses at the heart of our town, which is downtown Riverbank and on Santa Fe Avenue, Santa Fe Street. As a small business owner, I can say it's important to recognize the challenges we are facing in California, but also how we flourish through these challenging times, and we're supporting one another regardless of the situation. Upcoming events for me, I have my office hours next Thursday here in council chambers from eleven A M. to one P M. Bring the hard questions. I don't mind them. If I don't have an answer, I will definitely get back to you guys. And then May twenty-sixth is a Memorial Day celebration at Community Center. Around ten thirty A M., there will be some resource tables to kick off the event, and there will be a grab-and-go lunch provided. And then May thirty-first, I'm partnering with Parks and Rec to kind of preempt Michael for everything else I'm going to ask him for. And Nurse of the Year Corinne, who's also a community member, and a life jacket drive at Jacob Myers Park. We will be giving raffle tickets in exchange for life jackets, and our commitment is to keep all of the life jackets in Riverbank at Jacob Myers Park to avoid any drownings this recreational season. My goal is a hundred, so bring a life jacket. You get more tickets if you bring a toddler or infant jacket, because I'd like to put a huge emphasis on keeping our children safe this summer.
You, yes, ditto to absolutely everything that everyone said here. The only thing, well, I sit on Stan Cog. Uh, the only thing, well, uh, I, I sit on Stan Cog, um, and I sit on the executive committee within Stan Cog and volunteered for a couple subcommittees within there as well. And one of them is a value vision, uh, Stanislaw Steering Committee. Um, meeting one, uh, I was, and, and Josh could attest to this, kind of volunteered to chair the committee. So, um, one of the things that that committee does is provide some advisory support for the regional transportation plan, so taking a regional look, um, at our transportation with, uh, some of the state mandates in reducing greenhouse gases. And one of the things that, uh, we're looking now, uh, now, which, uh, I'll forward to my council colleagues and everyone, anyone else who's interested, is a public participation plan, uh, which will allow for actual input from residents to be able to, uh, mold the, uh, regional transportation and plan into something that reflects us and what's needed here. Um, I am going to be joining Opportunity Stanislaw as a board member. And so, again, taking a regional, uh, approach at some of the economic development, um, in supporting the city in that, uh, respect. Uh, today was a, uh, the first mayor's book club with the, uh, Riverbank Library. So it's going to be once a month, um, and it shifts Tuesdays, but, uh, just, I'm mentioning that because we are now at a temporary pop-up location at the teen center until September, uh, for the library, and I think now more than ever is important to go and support them and make sure that you're visiting our local library. Um, and the, the only thing I'll reemphasize, uh, that everyone said is our team building. Uh, one of the things that I was hoping for and took away from that is that, you know, we have different means to the same end, that we're all here for the community. And so, uh, though we can't all be at this, everything at once, it's a team effort to move forward and really represent, uh, the city as a whole. So I was really proud, uh, of the conversations that we had that day, and, uh, and hopefully we'll have a yearly team building, uh, exercise and opportunity. So we're looking forward to the Sept, or September, uh, next week's, uh, strategic planning. It's going to be open to the public. It's Monday, this coming Monday, right? At nine o'clock, and, um, it's an opportunity for, uh, the residents to come and voice what they want. Uh, our next three to five year, depending on what we land on, plan for the city moving forward, and to hear the priorities of the council as well. Um, and that is it. So we have no closed session. Our next regular city council meeting will be on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, at a regular time, six o'clock. This meeting is adjourned.